Hi, how are you? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Judge George, please call him.
Here.
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 For that number two public comment, public comment including any comments on the minimum maximum setback zone, which is scheduled to be approved on January fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. All questions or comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker will be given three minutes to comment on a topic on the agenda only. Each speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak. Before we have Republican four, I'd like to say to Judge Clerk, I'm sorry, the Judge Attorney, can give the definition on the minimum maximum setback zone for this audience.
Thank you, Mayor. All questions are ordered from fourteen. Please, uh, three and four of the ordinance, in the minds, uh, are given the definition.
It was three, four, five, the ordinance. Uh, fourteen, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I'm sorry, uh, specific, uh, minimum maximums that, uh, that we're looking at. The ordinance was actually prepared by, uh, the general office, uh, with the sharing. Supposed to be, uh, appendix A. I don't know if we sent over the appendix A, uh, to the bill received appendix A, which is. I just get some, uh, the law to your, uh, this is, I will. Briefly, here, as your question refers to the exit of setback, which is the exit of setback zone, um, which means the area around the water supply wells, yes, from session fourteen point three of the end, uh, can this ordinance, it's, again, it's right at the appendix, which, I don't know if you've already been, and then in the middle of the setback zone, which means the area around the community water supply well, established under section fourteen point two. So can you have appendix, it actually gives the actual measurements, uh, here, your, Mr. Myers, do you want me to go get the zone angle? Well, this would be an appendix, so the, uh, the, uh, the. This is probably your box, but this is where you can go, like, in the community. So it's been a while, I don't know. It's been a while I got to see this question. Can we talk about this after eight? Jim, you know, uh, have you seen the maximum minimum setback, sir?
A thousand feet is what I remember. They have seventy seconds.
Yeah.
That's the marijuana thing, that's it. Yeah. Cause I was gonna say, I know that.
Trustee, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Representative, I had asked a question. I just wanted to make sure it pertained just to the water. It didn't have anything to do with anything else, just pertaining to where the wells are located, correct? Have anybody built it or talked about it?
Setbacks, as far as, well, could be built or done.
Around, well, that's, that's, that's what we wanted, that's what we wanted to make sure. That was the reason why we wanted to find out from you, because we wanted to make sure it was just pertaining to where the wells are located.
Well, the wells are already located, they're located, but it's what, can't be.
Correct. And the minimum was just.
In that, in that zone or that area, and I don't have a great part of it, I don't.
Right, well, we do have one well that's, that was not active right now, but they, they would do any manufacturing that I got, you within a certain area of that. And one, uh, well isn't a residential area, and I don't think there'll be anything that we go there that would disturb it as well.
Correct, and I tell you that we've been, in discussions with the EPA, uh, that's where we got the guidelines from.
Right, okay, that was just, we just, I just wanted to be explained so we might be kind of understanding if it did pertain to the wells. And, um, right now, like I said, well, three is, is not enough, useful, if there's anything, if it ever come back, or we ever open up another one, that's, that's what this is there for.
Yes, well, three will be within the guidelines. What this does, actually, is that, you know, nothing, either five hundred feet or a thousand feet, you know, nothing can be, uh, obviously, dumped or filled or, in the area.
Correct. And that's what this was for, the minimum today.
Correct.
If I'm clarifying that, uh, is there any other questions or comments from the audience? I see none. We have number three, we have reports from officers, uh, mayor's report. I go through, first of all, I have collector's report for September and October, for the month of September. Property taxes is one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. Other taxes are two hundred and six thousand, fifty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. Licenses and permits are eight thousand, four hundred, sixty-eight dollars. Fees and services are two hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. Nothing for grants, transfers three hundred and forty-five thousand, and miscellaneous one hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Total revenue for the month of September, uh, one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. For the month of October, two thousand and thirteen. Property taxes were forty-four thousand, eighty-three dollars and four cents. Other taxes were a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-two thousand and six cents. License and permits were seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. Fees and services were two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Grants were thirteen thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Transfers were twenty-six dollars and two cents. Miscellaneous was a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents, for a total of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Uh, next thing I want to make sure, uh, all those events on officially the businesses, that on January twenty-fourth, for Village Hall, we're hosting the Chicago South Plant Economic Development Corporation Winter Forum here at the Village Hall. Uh, that's, uh, of course, obviously speaking, we got Brian Quigley from, uh, Determining, I'm sorry, Dicky Partners. Uh, we've got Mike Orjik, uh, Senior Vice President and Principal from Port and Brook. Uh, Rusty Winchell from Northwest Indiana University Business Development. Deputy Director of Illinois Bureau of Economic Development and Project Coordinator for Chicago South Plant Fiber Network. So we've got a, um, a great event ready to happen. If you're a Village resident, you're coming in that day to pay your water bills, we'll have certain spots where Village residents can, uh, come in. We'll make sure that there's parking spots, uh, in the back of the Village Hall, so if you know anyone's coming in, we'll make sure that you can get in. Uh, we're expecting anywhere between a hundred and fifty to two hundred, uh, for that event. So, um, it's a great time for South Village to be able to show off our community, number one, and to be able to meet with other developers and contractors, and of course, our local state, um, representatives, and, uh, of course, also, from other communities. So, um, we're excited about the event we're gonna have here on the twenty-fourth. Uh, the last thing I just wanted to make sure, we're, we're, hopefully, I try to cope with it pretty quick. But, uh, I'm proud to inform residents of South Village that tonight we'll be presenting a proclamation proclaiming South Village as a Neighborhood Watch community. Neighborhood Watch is undoubtedly one of the oldest and most well-known crime prevention programs in history. While the modern day concept of program, um, of program rose to prominence in the late nineteen-sixties, in response to an increasing burglary rate, the roots of Neighborhood Watch can actually be traced all the way back to the days of colonial settlements, when night watchmen patrol the streets. The modern version of Neighborhood Watch, Watch USA, Watch Program, was developed as a result of the multiple requests from sheriffs and police chiefs around the country, who were looking for crime prevention programs that would incorporate citizens' involvement and address the increasing number of burglaries taking place, especially in rural and suburban areas. In nineteen seventy-two, the National Sheriff's Association took the concept a step further by seeking funding to make the program a national initiative. Thanks to grants from local enforcement assistance administration, the National Neighborhood Watch Program was started. Since its beginnings, Neighborhood Watch has grown from an extra eyes and ears approach to crime prevention and to much more proactive, community-oriented endeavors, providing a unique infrastructure that brings together local officials, law enforcement, and citizens for the protection of their communities. Today's Watch Group Program incorporated activities that not only address crime prevention issues, but also restore pride and unity to a neighborhood. It is not uncommon to see members of Neighborhood Watch Groups participating in community cleanups and other activities that strive to improve the quality of life for community residents. Furthermore, Neighborhood Watch has become especially practical in our current society in which two-income families are the norm, and many neighborhoods are deserted during the day. While criminals have attempted to use the specifics to their advantage, law enforcement has uncovered an important reality. The communities in which citizens have observed and reported suspicious activities have enjoyed lower crime rates. As communities through the country have adopted the program and reported success, I ask that you join with me and embrace Neighborhood Watch Program as we continue to move our community forward. With that said, we move to the Village Clerk's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Please check out the Village website, website for listing the new laws that were passed in two thousand and fourteen. Of great significance to most of us is using handheld devices while driving, speed limits were increased, smoking with children in the car, and voting at seventeen. If you are a U.S. citizen who will be eighteen by November fourth, two thousand and fourteen, you can register and vote in the March eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen primary election, but you must register by February nineteenth. We are available to register your seventeen-year-olds at the Village Hall, and we would greatly love to do that. South Village E-Blasts have been getting rave reviews. The only way we make the E-Blasts successful is for all departments and committees and commissions and outside agencies to share information that can be forwarded to our residents. There are small flyers on the back of the table, as well as, it's in the South Talk that's also on the back of the table, to inform our residents on how you can sign up for the E-Blast. This is your small flyer that you can take with you that will show you how to sign up for the E-Blast. Also on the back table is our January calendar. You can find that on the back table. And we also have our flyer for the University Dinner. There's a lot going on in South Village, and our role is to try to inform residents that we do have events that we want you to be a part of, and there's activities going on that we want you to now, like, be a part of, but to join us in helping these events happen. If you can be a part of any committee or commission, feel free to join one of our trustees or one of our great volunteers, and be a part of something positive. Also in the back of the room, there's a poster hanging on the door of five finalists for the Village sticker contest. As a member of the fellow relations committee, it's my honor and my pleasure to work with the, uh, Rosen Williams, and, uh, Nan Morgen, and Pauline Stevenson, on the project where we are going to, uh, have one of our students design our two thousand and fourteen Village sticker. Those are the fifth finalists, and later on, I'm sure we'll find out who the winner is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, move to, uh, Judge Attorney, Attorney Michael Barrett.
Thank you, Mayor. On our report, I would ask, um, we have to accept the agenda. Uh, under, you know, motion to approve or release executive session minutes, uh, item C, October eighth, two thousand and thirteen, if that can move to, uh, item D, approval in the whole.
Because the, uh, the team is our co-ed. Um, with that said, our prime, we, we're gonna have a meeting this coming, uh, next this Thursday, but next Thursday here at Village Hall. We didn't have one at the first because we were trying to recuperate from Christmas and New Year. So we will have a meeting following Tuesday, a Tuesday week here at seven o'clock in the government relations. And we're inviting everyone to come, that would like to come out, give us some good ideas. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee, for the Neighborhood Watch Committee, and Trustee Washington.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, I want to start off by saying I want to thank all of the people that's on the committee for the Neighborhood Watch for all of the hard work that they've done over the last, literally, two years to make this program get to the point where it is today. Also, I want to say that the Neighborhood Watch Program internationally is known as the first line of defense against home invasion. When you see things happening in your neighbor's home and in their backyards with their cars and vehicles, when you begin to call and let the police know what's going on and alert them to those kinds of incidents, it helps to bring crime down drastically. Crime rates are down across the board nationwide, and these are some of the negative issues that plague many communities today. Murder, robbery, arson, motor vehicle theft, burglary, aggravated assault. There, these are a few ways the Neighborhood Watch can assist the local police in their various communities. And without further ado, I want to talk about our decal that is so popular in Sawthood Village. These are in the businesses all over the village. As you drive through the village, you may see them in different, in different drive-throughs. Also, the different residents, they're on their homes, they're on the businesses. And so we are very excited as a committee, the Neighborhood Watch Committee, that we have been able to reach out and offer to the community to educate people how to keep themselves safe, working along with the police department and along with the mayor and the board as a whole. Finally, I want to recognize the committee that have, that helped to make all of this happen. And we're going to unveil our new Neighborhood Watch signs. We are very excited tonight. I want to ask the president of our committee, Mr. Jerry, if you would come forward. And Gary, and our vice president, Daniel, if you'll come forth. And Arlene, you all can give these people a wave this time. Tequila, if you can come up. And Tequila, if you can come up. Larry Stewart, is he here? I want him to come up. This is a, a portion of the committee. Ms. Bernadine Hopkins and Tequila, it's just too many people to name. It's number one person that can make something happen. It takes a lot of people to make a program happen, and together we can make the dream work. So without further ado, I want to thank Kevin. And if I could ask Kevin, if you don't mind, Kevin, if you would just pass this out on both sides, maybe Sherri can get this other side. Sherri? A lot of the residents want to know exactly where the signs are gonna be. This is a projected list of where the signs are gonna go. We have four, we have four large signs that are gonna be at the entrances coming into Sawthood Village. And you will see that on the list. And we have twenty-eight smaller signs that's gonna go all out throughout the village. So on tag day, we were able, at one intersection, to collect six hundred and eighty-four dollars in one day from the residents in Sawthood Village that want these signs put up in that village. Give about a dozen big hand claps. I want to ask Trustee Myers, if he'll come at this time. Trustee Myers, come on, give him a big hand clap, everybody. Come on, daddy, listen. I think I do anything that I do without him. And you can ask our committee if you'll turn the table around, Jerry. If you, Daniel, if you all turn the table around. Come on, Trustee Myers, he's so shy. But I do want him to have some words to say because without him, I would not have had a place to host all of these meetings. Trustee Myers, come on over. You own my time, it's okay.
Once again, I want to thank the entire committee. I want to thank each and every resident of the village of Sawthood Village. This is something that was started long time ago. And then with the help of Mr. Washington and the mayor appointing there to the Neighborhood Watch Committee, uh, trustee over to form the committee. It's a working committee. And then we went out and we, unfortunately, there were budget cuts and everything. We, our budget was pretty low, and then we ended up with being cut more. So we went out and did a tag day and we collected quite a bit of money. And with that money, we bought some signs. And once the discussion through, um, what do you got to say, about at least a couple months or three months, we looked up pages and pages of, uh, national signs that were used. And then the committee finally decided to select one that is nationally known. And visiting other towns, uh, we decided to use this sign here. And then we were fortunate enough of a resident, uh, the mom of making signs. She assisted us in getting a fantastic price to have these signs made and produced. So once again, everything just fell in place and, uh, it was time to get Neighborhood Watch active and going now. Of course, the police chief, uh, on, uh, uh, watch, he assured me that, uh, we're gonna monitor, we're gonna have an officer or somebody to work with us and attend on our meetings. And they're busy, so we don't expect them to follow me, but they will be working with us. And there's some other people we've gathered up that's coming in for the train us. The biggest thing is description of people that doesn't belong in the area. And, you know, we do a drill every now and then. We get somebody to walk through the, our meeting and we ask them, what, what, it's not told us the heaven. How was he dressed? You'd be surprised. We had thirty-some people there that night. We had about thirty different, uh, ways that got me dressed. But anyway, it, it's just something that you have to do. When you call in, please, partner, you have to give a very, very, like, description of the person you saw. And that way, it helps our officers that are out there to catch the bad guys. And what up here, uh, the very places, it's working. People calling in, well, a few home living, we got the sergeant over there, assistant, um, chief. She's sitting there for the chief, she can answer your question. People call in, they give all kind of, I'm saying, people next door, a wall there, a house vacant, and the police come there. But, uh, the room was fantastic.
Thank you very much, Trustee. So without, without further ado, I just want to say about the sign that we have. It says that this is the number-one crime watch sign worldwide, the exact sign that we chose. So we're doing great things in Sawthood Village to help as a community to move this village forward. And without further ado, we're gonna ask the mayor, mayor, if you'll come in, if you'll do the honor of unveiling our sign. If we're gonna ask our committee if you'll hold the signs up. Uh, the men, you got these big, strong men. Everybody is so excited. And ladies, if you'll get a smaller one, uh, the ladies, if you'll get a smaller sign. The, the orange and the black ones. If you will pull the red, uh, cloth off, Mayor. And at this time, I want to produce and introduce to Sawthood Village your new Neighborhood Watch signs. Hold them up, everybody. Come on around and hold up the little green. We got the number-one sign in the United States that's recognized in Neighborhood Watch. Come on, give them a big hand clap. All of you that sit right here tonight, thank you for any questions that everybody's having. You made a big time in the park this evening. And I just want to thank the chairman for the Neighborhood Watch. I want to thank all of the board and all of the elected officials for all of your assistance. I want to thank the clerk for all your hard work. Clerk Baby Williams, and for the proclamation, the attorney, and everybody. So give yourselves a great big hand as you see these signs. As you drive through the village, you can know that together, the mayor and the board, we stand and sending a strong message with the churches, with the schools, the school board members are here tonight, and the businesses are here tonight. And we are going to call the police and we're gonna take our village back. If you believe that, clap your hands. One final thing.
I actually want to say thank you to all the volunteers, um, to make this happen. It took volunteers, and you're seeing, uh, people standing up there, the volunteers are in time to make this happen. So, um, with that said, I do have a proclamation I would read tonight. And I will go ahead and, go ahead and read it. Whereas the presence of crime in our community spreads fear and destroys trust and faith in others by threatening our lives, liberty, and general welfare. And whereas Neighborhood Watch is one of the oddest and best-known crime prevention concepts in North America. And whereas in nineteen seventy-two, the National Sheriff's Association, the NSA, created the National Neighborhood Watch program to assist citizens and law enforcement. And whereas keeping the homes, neighborhoods, schools, and workplaces in our community safe is of utmost importance, importance to all residents of our village. And whereas Neighborhood Watch encourages individual groups to work directly with law, local law enforcement agencies to report suspicious activities and be the eyes and ears, never intervening in law enforcement duty. And whereas effective crime prevention programs excel because of partnerships among law enforcement, civic groups, schools, faith communities, businesses, and individuals who work together towards the common goal of increasing public safety. And whereas Neighborhood Watch has brought countless communities together, inspiring members, bridging divides and strengthening bonds through the willingness of neighbors to help each other build a better community. And whereas the Neighborhood Watch Program empowers citizens and communities to act in emergency preparedness as well as fight against crime and community disasters. And whereas Neighborhood Watch signs will be posted at the main arteries and throughout the village to alert everyone that Sawthood Village is a Neighborhood Watch community. And whereas Neighborhood Watch communities experience benefits through the years such as reduced crime, a greater sense of security, community pride and unity, and providing law enforcement agencies with volunteer support year-round, reducing law enforcement's burden. Now therefore, I, David A. Hanks, mayor of Sawthood Village, do hereby proclaim Sawthood Village a Neighborhood Watch community dated this fourteenth day of January two thousand fourteen.
This is my sister, everybody.
Don't miss your little trusty, happy proclamation. Anything else, Trustee?
Now that concludes my report. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Trustee. Move to public relations, uh, sorry, public relations, committee outreach partnerships committee, Trustee Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's a night for presentations, and so that's, that's very good to take around these parts. First of all, our public relations committee, I just wanted to say that we're scheduled for the first Wednesday of the month. That is our meeting time. It was rescheduled due to, to weather last week. So we'll be meeting here tomorrow at five-thirty. And the community outreach partnerships committee will be next week at six P.M. here. And we go back to public relations committee. For those of you who are not familiar with this committee, one of our most anticipated things to do for this committee is Student Governor Day. Student Governor Day is an opportunity where the eighth graders of Sawthood Village get to participate in the roles and responsibilities of elected officials, our village attorney, our engineer, our apartment heads. And we've seen the success that comes with that. The kids really do enjoy it. This year, we decided we wanted to kind of do something for some of our younger students in Sawthood Village. Historically, the village sticker is something that is created and authorized by the mayor and the village clerk. I kind of had it in with the village clerk, who is not only my mother, but she's also on my committee. So speaking with her, with her, the mayor's approval, we were able to extend the opportunity for the village sticker contest to be created by students of Sawthood Village in grades three through seven. Um, we hope that next year we will have a larger turnout. We had just under thirty kids participate this year. But I do want to say thank you to all of the residents, all of these students who participated. We had some very, very unique village stickers presented. We had some very good concepts that were surprising for the ages that they came in with. Um, so I wanted to just thank my committee for being as diligent and as always ready to dive into a new topic as they always are. I want to say, um, Mr. Gary Holcomb, for all of his help. And we do have a little something for you that I'd like to present to you. And for your continued support of the committee. And at this time, I would like to say that we are gonna announce we had five finalists. We invited them to come to the board meeting tonight, so I'm gonna have them come up in no order. It's an alphabetical order. Have everybody come up. Um, we do have a certificate that has the air picture that they made. And, um, and on that certificate, it does either say finalist. We have four finalists, and we have one winner. We did not say second, third, fourth. Um, we didn't think that that was necessary. And to be honest with you, the, the difference between all of them were very, very close. So it was kind of a very hard decision. We had to do a couple rounds. The committee couldn't make a decision. We had to go to ask office personnel to come in and help us make a decision. Because it was, it was definitely, it's definitely hard to decide. We had some really good things to choose from. I'm sure you guys can tell by looking at the back, while I'm seeing what we were given. And I just wanted to point out that we had five finalists, three of which were from third grade. Very, very excited about that. And again, I would like to thank my committee, the village clerk, and Marv from the library, Marv Stevenson, myself, and then everybody else who helped us judge. We do have a banner token for the winner and the finalists. We do have more heart gift cards for them. We hope it's, um, it's not much. Um, but we do hope that you guys enjoy it by yourself. Something great, because apparently you guys are just awesome. So. Did I have these now? And I apologize if I butcher your name. Uh, Alicia Colick?
Elijah.
Elijah? Elijah? Ethan Knight? Angel Lee? Jemaya? Haley Thomas? Like I said, there's certificates all do have the, they made on them. Thank you guys for the presentation. You guys are awesome, and I would like to present two thousand and fourteen village sticker will look like this, and it was presented by Angel. So this year, on May first, when you are busting down the doors to get your village sticker, this is what you will be seeing every day when you drive your car. And then we just have small, little, little appreciation. Thank you guys very much. And we do hope that as a committee, we hope that you guys continue to want to be a part of other village activities. And for those of you who are in sixth grade, start writing your essay now for Student Governor Day. You only have two more years. So, and if you guys could do a little favor of the board, if you guys can kind of turn around. They get to see after mom and dad, uncle and brother, take all pictures. You guys can turn around to the board and see what's there. And if I could just ask that all the parents stick around at the end, because I would like to get some pictures of all the individuals myself and, for Sawthood. Yeah. Well, you can't.
Trustee, I'd like to give this moment, just real quick. I see it on the audience, we have quite a few school board members here. I see they have, uh, superintendent Tremlee. School board member, I see school board, uh, guy. Hope I was there, I see, uh, school board member. Mary Howard. I'm missing, I'm missing anyone. Oh, if you're a teacher, if you're here, you can raise your hand, please. Right above. Oh, there you are. I appreciate you coming out to our board meeting and, uh, supporting this. Again, something that, uh, I know that the committee has worked hard. We, uh, really pushed last year to show pride for our, for our community. This is one way that, um, we move forward and it brings pride. And it's gonna be fun to see that as a village sticker this next year. So I'm gonna try to hit you with one. Since I'm here.
Um, I just wanted to, kind of, if you can, at the end, just say thank you for the District One Sixty-Eight continued support. This was the first year that we've done the village sticker contest, but I'm gonna trust you for darn near. And, um, I've always had extended support from District One Sixty-Eight for Student Governor Day. And I would just like to thank you, that all of you guys have been over the last nine years. But even prior boards, current boards, you guys have always supported the public relations committee as well as the, the village of Sawthood Village. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you, and I hope that our continued participation goes out far beyond all of our terms and that we can still work together to build another Sawthood Village. So thank you, guys. Thank you.
Now, the trustee, move to reports. The departments committees in commission, fire station. And, uh, Trustee Myers, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fire department over the past two weeks responded to thirty-one calls. The department responded to five fire accidents, eight fire alarms, five non-coastance, three CO alarms, one structural fire. Yes, it's been the coldest day of the year. We had a structural fire. Two smell of gas, three broken pipes, and also during that night, uh, the coldest night of the year, we had pipes popping all over town. So, uh, once and all, electrical burning and a roof collapse. And we also sent another department with a structural fire. From January fourth to the seventh, because of the snow and the wind field factor, when below forty, below zero, the mayor contacted us, demanded a fire station or warming center. We put four, four firemen under, and during that night, we responded to four calls and to help citizens and harmlessly, and we opened up the stations to work several residents to keep warm. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would please make sure you pass my thanks to the fire departments for putting on those additional shifts so we could have warming centers, uh, during that, of course, spell again. Move to police department.
Uh, since January first, police department has taken six hundred and six calls for service, twenty eight residents for emergency services, forty rest, two little possession controlled substances, one dangerous life-threatening, seven drones, seven remote firelight. I think it's time to say congratulations, Mr. Washington and, uh, the mayor, Axol. You know, you had a lot for this, that, and that. While everybody's hard over, you're gonna raise your hand, everybody. Congratulations. Rosie, I hope they can spare for the child who wants that to have to buy a little steer.
Well, she's not holding up the truck, so. You know what? If they put that one in the window, maybe the cops won't write up and say, it looks the same.
Thank you very much. Move to public works department.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, since beginning of the year, we've had definitely unusual start to this year. We had quite a bit of snow, quite a bit of cold, um, all at one time. It didn't come in the beginning or the end. It's all at one time. But, uh, throughout our snow event, uh, we, we do get a few, uh, calls for, uh, repairs, mainly mailboxes. Um, each time we do calls for mailboxes, we will go and value the mailbox. Residents are required to maintain their mailbox just like the rest of their property. If we do come over to an address and the mailboxes are in very poor conditions, thrown out with wire or just barely hanging on, residents will be required to repair their own mailboxes. If we definitely damage it, we will definitely look it over and do a work closely as soon as possible. Um, all they have to do at this point is leave the box on the ground and the mail will be delivered and so can be repaired. At this point right now, we have roughly about seven boxes that we're gonna have to look at. Uh, we've looked at about half of, at least our repairs, we will go through it. Um, other than that, uh, our storm event went pretty well, um, for, for Sawthood Village and cold. Uh, the salt didn't work as, as well as everybody thought it would, but, uh, certain temperatures after zero degrees, it's, uh, it's best thing to stay in the house rather than drive around. Helps us out, helps get some fire out for accidents. Um, and in the morning, when the sun comes out, drive around, let that salt start to work and, uh, clear up the streets. Please, don't throw the snow on the streets. During the other winter this time, especially with the, we've had the quickness and thaw, we would get puddle problems. Uh, we're gonna start doing some puddle patching as of, uh, the end of the week. We have a few emergencies in front of that. Uh, one which is over on Yates and at twenty-one hundred and thirty-six block of Yates. We have a van's placed, we have it tomorrow. And, uh, there will be a few affected residents, uh, and anybody affected by the water shutdown. If you notice any of your mailboxes or your door, letting them know about the boilerware they'll have to put out because people shut their hand down with this, uh, roughly eighteen-foot water bank. But they will, they'll all get a note for affected. And, uh, when the boiler is lifted, you know, the forty-eight hours, you get a notice for it. And if you have any other questions, you can call the village hall and we'll talk to you whatever question you may have. I'm going, uh, water leaks, we have a couple in town. Uh, we have one going right now due to the weather conditions. We have not been able to approach them. We have the, I think, hydrant over on two hundred and twenty-third street and three thousand block. Um, we're trying to help residents as possible to eliminate the ice ball, and we are getting to them as quickly as possible. Um, we did have a couple of truck repairs that we had to look through during the event. Uh, we had a broken spring. Uh, we had a couple plows go down. Most of that has been repaired. The springs are lying going, but I think hopefully with the condition of our weather, we'll be over with here. We had a one-rounder in the year. Hopefully that's it for us. And our D and D operations will continue. Uh, we do have some programs and some, uh, projects that they set up earlier last year or later last year that we were supposed to get to. The weather conditions have pushed us off. Uh, we are still in the process of, uh, removing some trees, the ash trees still, that will happen towards the end of the month, start back to good again. And, uh, most of our hydrant repairs will start back in then. The weather conditions will be appropriate for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment. Uh, last week during the committee meeting, I, I did send out my thanks to the departments, but the department is, we're not here. During the weekend, we had our worst weather with the snow, the cold weather. Uh, all our departments were out there, police, fire, as, uh, and public works. I do, again, send my thanks to all of those that worked. And, uh, made it here to make sure that our streets are safe, make sure that residents were safe. And the warming centers, they won't be sending police departments, they won't be sending at the fire station. So there was a lot of extra work. The people came out of their warm houses to make sure the residents were safe. Uh, when it came to the snowfall, uh, they have their opinions on how our public works department did, but they, uh, they did a fantastic job for the amount of snow that fell during the year. All I can say is almost every road around Sawthood Village was closed and every road in Sawthood Village was open. So, and, and, and. With that, I'd like to move to administrative services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be real quick. Um, just like to give you, um, code enforcement total tickets from January first to December thirty-first of two thousand and thirteen. We wrote one thousand eight hundred and nineteen tickets. And, um, so far, from January first to the thirteenth, we wrote thirty-three tickets, twenty-seven of them being parked in on the street, um, after two inches of snowfall, and six of them. in on the street, um, after two inches of snowfall and six of them were parked on the street during garbage day. The village hall will be closed Monday and observance of Mark Newt or King. And I, can I make a comment on an item that I think we're voting on on tonight? Um, I don't double F. I just want to clarify it's a dispensary and cultivation center. It just says distribut- distribution center. It's for both of those facilities. I just wanted to make a, you know, just make sure that it gets voted for because we've been through the bring them. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Robb was sick today, so I'm pretty sure the board knows he was, he was might be here. Uh, move to Sock Village Homeland Security Agency, Mr. Johnson.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Uh, professional safety center, we just talked to the board of the hall. We've been in four accidents, five high alarms, one structural fire, two CO alarms, one small block, light fire, two gas mix, one roof on the height, two school controls, one structural fire, and one moving device. You know, I forgot this, uh, ULC virus, annual piece of virus is a reference to the county having mitigation blindness as well. Thanks to you that that you, you need a problem, they're all sending the question.
Thanks, sir. Move to human relations commission, Trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to make a quick announcement tonight. In the very back on the table, we have applications for the human relations commission first annual diversity dinner. We would be sponsoring a diversity dinner right here at the senior center on Friday, January the 24th from 6:30 to 9:30 PM. We're going to have a wonderful setup. We're going to have eight tables and each table we're going to have a different topic. Everyone that's coming, that brings something for potluck, we're going to have so much food on the table and this, we have the setup where we're going to have a topic at each table. You'll talk so many minutes at that table, then you'll get up and you'll move to another table and eat more and we'll talk about something else. Isn't that wonderful? How many of y'all like to eat? Raise your hand. Okay, put that big cake up that I would take it back. But I want to encourage all of y'all to come. Our vice president, Commissioner Frank Williams, where is he?
He's at the leave.
He's here. He's right there in the foyer. If you can turn these in, tonight would be the deadline. It's free. It doesn't cost anything. The applications are in the back. It's two per household. So if you want to come, if you think you'll be interested, and I know that everyone in this room will be, we need you to fill out these applications tonight for our diversity dinner. And just write your name and your phone number and it's going to be on a Friday night right here. And we have an awesome guest speaker that's coming. We have some other human relations commissioners that's in the room. Did you raise your hand? I see Commissioner Steve back there in the back. Any other commissioners here on the human relations commission? You can see him if you have any other questions. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. House of Commissioners, Trustee, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hope.
Yeah. Uh, the only thing I want to report, uh, 2013, uh, I was in the review and everybody watched and my blog and I'm back there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Senior Committee, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to report, uh, the Bloom Township's community luncheon is this Thursday, January 19th. It's Welcome 2014. The luncheon is bringing in the new year with Pete Riddeling, um, Trey Open, Glenwood Golf Club. The tickets, uh, for the February 19th, Wednesday, Betzamore is a love Italian style with Frank Rossi. They're on sale. Deadline to purchase those tickets February 12th. Uh, the Bloom Township continues with their senior cheer exercise every Friday, 10 to 11. The Souths Urban Legal Assistance Clinic every fourth Tuesday by appointment. They also have blood pressure screening every third Wednesday by appointment. And they are still providing assistance to the healthcare insurance. They have the ship, Illinois Ship Program with counseling available. They still have low-cost transportation within the township. Senior wheels number 707548200. You do need to call Bloom Township if you need any other information. We do have a lot of literature on the record. The event's the senior committee sponsor. However, I'm sorry to say that our Zoom class are now suspended due to lack of participants. Our free monthly blood pressure screening for all village resident and village employees is in the senior center office on Monday, February 3rd, 2013, from 1:00 to 1:45 and every first Monday. The paperback book exchange continues. Our blood pressure and monthly movie, the next one is parental guidance. It's on Monday, February 10th, 2014, co-sponsored with the Connaughton College Library. A flyer listing the village activities and movies are available in the lobby, uh, literature rack. There's also a senior center survey available for your interest and input. Uh, the senior club, the fun club meeting resumes every second and fourth Sunday at 3:00 PM. Sunshineers next meeting will be Monday, January 20th, and they're having nominations, selection of officers. The leisure timers will not meet until February 12th. This past Friday on January 10th, we had several seniors participating during this social hour with various activities. Want to thank our committee member Larry Stewart who are overseeing this. This program mirrors our summer program. Sock Village Bluegrass continues every Sunday from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Uh, for those who want afternoon meeting, the Golden Ageers will meet Wednesday, January 15th, Jones Memorial Community Center, 220 East 15th Street, Chicago Heights. 10 o'clock is social hour, 10:30 meeting, lunch at 11:30. Cost for the lunch is $5. They do need reservations. Their annual dues are $5 for the year 2014. They'll be collecting that at the meeting. You can call 757-5395. There is a workshop for newly guried that's within the next, uh, the past six months. It's on Tuesday, February 11th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. This event is sponsored by the Horizon Hospice and Palliative Care and it's going to be at Lithia Fields Light Refresh and Reserve. And this program is, um... Lost my place. Um, there's no fee for it, but the reservation, you call 708-283-8150. I did put a few flyers in the back and I do have more available. Just a reminder for qualified seniors to be sure to complete and return their annual senior or freeze tax exemption application. The next senior committee meeting will be held on Thursday, February 13th, 5:00 PM. The committee has scheduled the next chili cook-off of Saturday, March 29th. Thank you. This ends my report.
Thank you very much. Move to consent agenda. I'd ask if there's anything from the trustees. Seeing that I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, moving I O C C to I O V E under approved and full. Is there a motion to approve? Motion is second. Let's go to Scotty.
First is supported. Yes. Fires. Yes. Paskett. Yes. Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries. Move to I have number seven, orders of resolution. For motion to approve, the ordinance established should have the minimum maximum setback zone. So motion to approve. Any questions or comments? Move on to those quick. Please call roll.
First is supported. Yes. Fires. Yes. Paskett. Yes. Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries. Move to new business. Uh, motion to approve the accounts payable in this first month for December 11th, 2013 through January 14th, 2014. So motion to approve. And motion is your second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments?
Question. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I talked to Mohan the other day and he told me that, well, right now I see that this is his report. This is, this is correct, okay, because I'm under the impression that we probably have to move the fund, but now this doesn't show that.
No, I think he takes it day by day unless the money comes in. He, I think he warrants the board just in case money has to be moved.
So nevertheless, we do have the amount to, uh, to pay the, uh, we have the money on hand to pay because I think it was only a hundred or something. Everything else was paid ahead of time.
Correct. So, looks like the comp bill will be paid now as 141,000.
Right. I mean, that's what, that's what's in here, but everything else has been paid.
Correct.
We have the money. That's why I just, for these nine years, I probably was only reading. I was going to ask him that today, but it's in there. If he said it'd be happening, we have it.
Got it. Any other questions or comments? Move on to I have number nine, signing comments from the mayor and board trustees. Sir, trustee, trustee mayor, trustee mayor, trustee mayor, trustee mayor. Motion carries. Move to I have number nine, assigning comments from the mayor and board trustees. Sir, trustee, trustee mayor, trustee mayor, trustee mayor. Trustee Paskett.
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. I'm still looking for people to volunteer to form a sports association, group to help get, try to get to baseball, people to dance and walk over. Any volunteers would be appreciated. And that's all. End of speaker.
Thank you, trustee, trustee mayor. I'm sorry, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, I wanted to thank Public Works and to thank Kevin for not standing job during the blizzard and the snowstorm. I was actually talking to some friends of mine in other communities and they were complaining and they were very upset. They were stuck. People in front of them were stuck. Women didn't know they were spinning in one spot. They couldn't get out. The roads weren't plowed. I say, all of our streets are clogged. They're like, no, they got up like yesterday. Ah. So my step, my chest was stuck out for Sock Village. We doing some great things around here. I also wanted to applaud the village clerk for what she's been doing with those alerts, uh, getting people to go on the website and put their email address and things so that you can alert us of things that's going on. I've also been pushed here. I think it's an awesome thing that you've been doing just managing that. And I just hope that everybody will go on that webpage and give your email address. Haven't you all been enjoying getting alerts of different things that's going on? I mean, we're doing all of these different things as a board to try to move the village forward. I'm just so excited and elated about the signs for the neighborhood watch. I'm going to just thank my committee again for working with me. Uh, Steve, if you don't mind, I'm asking my husband to step in here for a moment. He's right outside that door. And I want to thank my sister. Raise your hand, LaMia. That's my sister. Many of you all know her because she works right here at the Dollar General. And I want to thank, um, my husband at the security house, the post security house that's walking in the door. I don't know how you can be so far away from me. We're still moving. I want to thank my husband and my sister because they have to live with me every day. And I just think they bless their hearts. And finally, I'm looking forward to the photo op with the elected officials at 4:00 AM when we put our first sign up. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Rogers. I can't follow that. I'm sorry. I can't follow that. I just like, what I do like to thank is just like to thank the school, school district for coming out and supporting their, y'all, their students. And I appreciate that Rosie, a fine job. I mean, that's great. I just appreciate that. I mean, she does account the government day and then now she's doing this too. I mean, it's a great way to get the kids and the community together because we have to work together. You know, school district 168, we have, we're, we're the village, but we have the same students, the same residents, the same people. So we have to work together, the school board and then the village board. I want to say thank you very much. And I haven't been attending the, um, school board meeting, but I will be coming back. But I'm just so glad to see that we're all out there together. Hope that we can still come out when, when the school district adds something. Also, you are on the website, in the government website. So when you do upgrade your website, um, District 168 is already on there. So we appreciate that, but again, I'd like to say thank you. I'd like to say thank you, Rogan, for what you did. That was a great job. And also not to be remiss, I want to thank trustee Washington for a great job that you put together for tonight for the, um, neighborhood watch and the signs and the money and everything that you did to make it happen. That's all.
Thank you, trustee. I'd just like to end with, uh, some thankings. Again, I'd like to thank our volunteers. Uh, tonight we saw a bunch of presentations, quite a few presentations, and it was all put on by, led by trustees, but also put on, um, was made possible due to the volunteers of our village. I'd like to thank you very much. Uh, leading back to our volunteers, I did attend the basketball game on Saturday also. I got to be there at the beginning. Then I go just in village business and I came back and got to watch the, of the last game. So, um, I think the kids looked out there. They look good. They have their new uniforms on. They look like they're having fun. And I'd like to thank, uh, the volunteers. I'd like to thank the personal reps and the trustees up here that worked very hard. Something that we're looking forward to having more events and more activities for the youth of our community. So, uh, if you're a volunteer out there and you like baseball, Lynn, you reach out to these trustees. Uh, we definitely want to see our baseball program up and running again. Uh, we just had to receive some money from a company that came through with some pipes, Enbridge, uh, gas pipes. Through Enbridge and, uh, they gave us money to update our baseball fields. So we're going to be going out there this summer or this spring. And I think the money that we receive will be able to put in new, um, new grass and fill in some of the divots and put some new, uh, I think it was P-mots or something inside there, which is what I call sand. Uh, start building up our, our mountains again. Uh, so we're excited about that. Now we have to do is get the volunteers and get the kids out there playing. I remember growing up, there was always a main event in Sock Village when the baseball season started. So I would like to see that happening again. Uh, again, thank you to the volunteers. I think we'll be starting off 2014 on a bright note. And, uh, just a little more on the committee. With that said, I'd like to add for motion to adjourn. If you wish, and say a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please put out your diversity dinner applications in the back and give them to either Steve or Frank Williams tonight. We have to have a head count. We want everyone to come to the diversity dinner.